And I'll just remind you that your microphones are not on to make sure you turn them on when you speak here.
Okay.
And we've got a little bit of a new setup. I think we're ready to go.
All right. We're ready?
Ready.
All right. All right, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, uh, excuse me, Thursday, September 9, 2021, Urbandale City Council meeting. Ask, uh, they'll call the meeting in order. Ask the clerk to take roll call, please.
Caduceus?
Here.
Obricht?
Here.
Poggi?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And Carberry Montgomery is absent.
Thank you, Nicole. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Urbandale is a national leader in character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting times being, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Uh, I am to approve the agenda. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Move to approve the agenda?
motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Poggi. Discussion, please vote. All right, uh, that passes. All right, thank you. Uh, item three, citizens' forum, this opportunity to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's regular agenda. Does anyone wish to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing done, we will move on. Item four, uh, the adoption of the minutes. Uh, item 4.1 is the adoption of the August 24, 2021 meeting.
No move?
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Caduceus. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Uh, item five is the consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda for approval.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Obricht.
Second.
Second by Poggi. Discussion, please vote. Yeah, that passes.
Does now.
Item six, uh, public hearings versus item 6.1, uh, a development agreement with Premier Prairie Tech and introduce the, uh, see, the public notice for this is published in the August 25, 2021, Urbandale, uh, register and ask the clerk for the objections if that notice is published.
There were none.
Ask for a motion and second open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing. Second.
Obricht, second by Caduceus. Discussion, please vote. Okay, that passes. Uh, to introduce the items, our Assistant Economic Development Director, Aaron DeYoung. Aaron?
Great, thank you, Mayor. City Council, Aaron DeYoung with the Economic Development Department. Uh, happy to present to you the, the proposed development agreement with Premier Tech, uh, Premier Tech Prairie, actually. It's a subsidiary of Premier Tech, uh, which is a Canadian company based out of Rivière-de-Luc, Quebec. Uh, they focus in three main areas. It's the agricultural. They also do automation types of improvements as well as water, uh, quality types of solutions that they, they manufacture and sell. Uh, they do want to expand their seed industry, which is focused here in the, with their Iowa operations. They are currently located in Johnson and, uh, they, uh, we're looking at multiple locations throughout the metro as well as, uh, in, in several other states, uh, in the United States. Um, we, we've been, Curtis and I have been working with this company since the, the end of 2020 and, uh, we're happy to, to bring this to you. Uh, what they are proposing to do, uh, and are seeking incentives for is to build a new, uh, research and development, uh, facility for their Iowa operations. Should be a 17,000 to 20,000 square foot facility. Uh, they have identified, uh, three parcels on Plum Drive, uh, just, uh, uh, east of 100 Street, um, and they are looking to begin that, that construction in spring of '22 with that. Uh, the total investment with, with land, grading, building, and all the equipment, uh, to go into the facility would be $7.6 million. Uh, through this process, uh, they, they are also seeking insistence and, and was awarded assistance from the Iowa Economic Development Authority, uh, through their high-quality jobs program. Uh, that's a three things, the investment tax credit, uh, incentive, as well as a sales tax refund and all the construction materials, uh, purchased for the building, and also a forgivable loan component, uh, as the three, the third leg of the incentives tool that the state is offering. Uh, with that, there are job retention and creation requirements, uh, with that, so 55 jobs total would be at the new facility. Thirty-nine would be moving from the existing facility and then 16 new positions would be created there. Uh, should notes, this is a, is a move from Johnson to Urbandale. We have followed the fair play, uh, agreement amongst all of our communities, so they are fully aware of this, uh, and did sign off on that. So on to the city's development agreement side of this. This is, uh, the city's standard five-year tax increment financing rebate, which is a five-year sliding scale at the percentage, percentages up on the screen. Uh, also, as a matching component to the ci, uh, the state's assistance is a five-year zero-interest loan offering to them of totaling $50,000. And that'll be out through our revolving loan program. Um, so some of the requirements that are within this development agreement, uh, which is our standard development agreement as it follows with our sliding scale, is to have job creation, uh, efforts there at the new facility, also to construct the facility, that's what we're here for, and also to pay all their finance, financial obligations, taxes, permits, uh, you know, make sure that they keep it up. Uh, so that is my very brief presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, and we've got a resolution for you here to, to approve if you see fit. So that ends my presentation. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron from the council? All right, thanks, Aaron. We are on public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? All right, Vern, if you could please come up. Your name and the rest for the record, please.
For Millsap Bestland Properties. And I have already conveyed to people that I have an opposition to TIF money. I don't care about the building and, and especially business because I'd rather that go in behind our houses than a bunch of apartment buildings. So that, that's not my opposition. But my opposition is what I've conveyed to someone about TIF loans. I looked up the description before I even got here. And, and the description of TIF is not anything that resembles that land there. That land there is very expensive land. I just don't want a bunch of apartment buildings go in. Alls I know is what I've heard at TIF, TIF money is not for buildings like this. And besides, it seems like when you have TIF money, TIF money ends up paying for about a whole operation, it sounds like to me. So, and under the definition of TIF, I just wondered how that land got, in, in my opinion, renamed for like blighted land and, and that it doesn't do well economically. I don't get how that come about. That's good land. Very good land. So, like I said, I welcome the business. It's better than apartment buildings that you guys don't have to deal with. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else like to address the council on this item, either for or against? Okay, seeing done. Then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Poggi.
Second.
By Caduceus. Discussion, please vote.
Nicole, I'm having issues with my iPad. Can you just vote me as I? Thank you.
Okay, that passes. Then, a motion on the item.
Move to approve resolution 210-2021.
Motion by Obricht.
Second.
Second by Poggi. Discussion, please vote.
Nicole, I'll be an I on this as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That passes. All right, we'll move on then to planning and zoning items. We have one planning and zoning item, item 7.1, the Waterford Ridge Platte II final platte at 153rd Street and Waterford Road. And to introduce this is our Community Development Director, Steve Franklin. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening all. Okay, cool. All right, another residential final platte for you this evening. Uh, this is in probably one of the busiest, busiest areas that we have right now. This is Waterford Road. Here at the top, this is 153rd Street. So the Waterford Road, 156th, uh, intersection is just over here to the west. This is Platte II, Waterford Ridge Platte II. Uh, it's about 1,500 feet east of the intersection of 156th and Waterford. It's 5.7 acres in size and proposes another 29 single-family residential lots with a minimum width of 50 feet. Platte I were the lots here to the west of 153rd. They were also the 50-foot minimum lot width, so this would be the second phase of this part of the overall development of the roble property, that whole mile from 142nd to 156th. This was the area with the smaller 50-foot lots. So again, Platte I was previously approved, houses being constructed there. This would be Platte II, which is another 29 lots. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval subject to items noted. Be happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? All right, sir, motion second.
I'll, I'll move to close the public. Oh, no, this is just, I'll move, uh, Waterford Ridge Platte II, final platte.
Motion by Caduceus.
Second.
Second by Obricht. Discussion, please vote.
Nicole, I'll be an I on this one, too. I'm just not getting the voting pop-up. I'll try restarting later. There isn't a bottom button. Let's continue voting in the middle.
Oh, we only have one more vote left.
Yeah.
I wouldn't sweat it too much. Uh, move on to item eight, uh, regular agenda items. We have item 8.1, the engineering services agreement for the North Walnut Creek Bank stabilization from Hickman Avenue to Roseland Drive. And John, are you going to make a presentation?
Glad to answer any questions.
Okay. John Larson, answering any questions if there are?
But I just want to continue on. So I had a comment to AJ earlier about the engineering services. They're looking at any possible way to stabilize this bank. It's not just we're going to dump a bunch of concrete.
Yes, that is correct. Uh, really, we're still in the process, or once they're under contract, they need to provide us at least three different options and maybe any combination of those, but really don't have any preconceived notions other than we went into a kind of meeting with people and saying our intent is not to clear-cut everything, lay the banks back and riprap everything. We're looking for something that's maybe not as noticeable or color, you know, disruptive to the, to the environment there.
Okay. And even if they do go riprap, then we might put some vegetation or something back on the bank side so it, it fills in a little faster than 20 years.
Yeah, like I said, that's, that's all the different things we'll look at once, once they come through with some recommendations to us.
Okay, thanks.
All right, with that?
With that, move approval of council letter 6819.
Motion by Obricht. Second by Poggi. Discussion, please vote.
I'm an I.
That passes. Then moving on to item 8.2, is discuss the traffic issue at 15900, 16400, Aurora Avenue. AJ, did you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, at your previous city council meeting, you received a request from an area resident concerning traffic, particularly speed-related issues in the neighborhood in which he resides. He had a number of very specific issues that he would like, uh, the city council to take action on. That was presented as an informational piece, and at that point, uh, the council did not take any action which was appropriate. It was submitted at the time of the meeting, uh, for your consideration. Uh, this week in preparation of this meeting, uh, staff, particularly the staff members of the Urbandale Police Department submitted a historical perspective on traffic enforcement-related issues in that particular neighborhood, uh, and that runs from the westernly city, city limits on Aurora and near 162nd Street, uh, up to the intersection, the T-intersection of Aurora on 159th Street. And they provided a fairly comprehensive review of traffic control, uh, speed control-related issues that we've been dealing in that neighborhood since approximately 2015. And the efforts that have been made by a police department to monitor and to try to affect, uh, traffic that, uh, could be speeding in that area. The request was, uh, as submitted to you, was that the individual would like to have had some answers by council at this council meeting. Uh, in preparing the agenda, uh, it was, in our discussions internally, uh, the council had not had an opportunity to review, uh, those requests, and so we thought it was appropriate for you as a council to have that opportunity to discuss among yourselves what actions that you would like to take or direct staff to take in addressing this individual's concerns or request. And again, hence the information that was supplied and the options given to you by the police chief and by myself for any further consideration. That item on the agenda is for discussion only, and at some future date, if appropriate and directed by council, we would place on action items on a future, uh, agenda for your formal adoption and direction. So with that, um, I would submit that the police chief and myself would be happy to answer any questions you have, particularly concerning the data that was supplied, the historical perspective on the, um, on the location, and, uh, if you have any questions on options that we presented for you.
All right, thank you, AJ.
Yes, my question's kind of go back to, to the data piece. I mean, do we have traffic count speeds, traffic study at all in that area since it all got fully developed out to justify either stop signs or anything else in the area to slow traffic?
I don't have the, the last warrant review we did, um, I was going to say it was several years ago, but most of that area was fully developed at the time. Um, again, I'd have to go back and look specifically at the warrants for the traffic, uh, control sign, although his request, as I read through it, um, did not, this particular request did not request a stop sign. It was just more traffic control or speed control in the neighborhood. Also, the certi attorney reminded me that you did receive a letter from him, uh, that was forwarded to you by the city clerk dated today, indicating that, um, he would not, the, uh, the petitioner would not be available at tonight's meeting, uh, and that, um, again, he requested that the council direct my position, myself, and staff to stop protecting the speeders in our neighborhood and start protecting the 28 neighborhood kids. And again, that letter was submitted to you, so I won't take the time to read it verbatim, but, um, he had, um, just questions that he raised, uh, that makes you aware of, to make you aware of, of concerns that he had and, again, um, things that we can address in the future time.
You know, I have a couple of problems. I don't know that the area, the, the problems in that particular area are any different than any other area. And some of the speed cameras are, the, some of the tracking we have done indicates an average speed. I was surprised how low the average speed of the cars is out there. Um, so I, I have issues with all of that. The, the, the fact I find intriguing is from muscatine, I assume, is the, the temporary speed bumps. And I like that, although I'm also concerned about it, I like the fact that I don't think we should install those in a neighborhood unless we get a majority of the people in the, in the neighborhood agree that they want them in for 30 days or whatever it is. And, um, my only concern with, and it may apply more to this area out there, is that, um, there will be pressure on neighbors to sign petitions to get them. And, um, and it appears that there's been pressure on people already out there, and I, I, I'm somewhat hesitant on that, but that, that's a solution and, and it might apply to a lot of places where we could do that and maybe slow down traffic, make people more aware of it. But, um, I, I, uh, I, I don't want to say this is a, you know, blown clear out of proportion, but I, I just question whether or not we have it in that big of an issue out there. You know, kids are always important. I'd like to slow people down if there are a couple speeding out there, but I don't, I, I think we've taken reasonable steps to this point.
But I'll just add, and I guess thanks for the amount of information that we received as well. Um, I appreciate the comprehensive reports we got on the historicals on this, the immense amount of data in terms of car counts, hours of car counts, speed of car counts. Um, and I, I was surprised they were where they were based on reading the materials. I thought we might see a high degree of speed in that area and, and saw a lot of cars going probably about as, as fast as I might drive through a residential neighborhood, um, and I don't think as excessive. And I think as it can be done in a safe manner. I, I was intrigued also by the, the speed bump thing and, um, uh, if we can find a, if that's something the neighbors can come to a consensus on, that they think that might be a reasonable solution, uh, that might help control. I think it will probably, at least while they're there, definitely have an effect on the traffic, uh, in that area.
And what I liked about them is they can be moved. I mean, if we get complaints from another neighborhood, we have a solution. We say, okay, if 50% of your neighbors within this two-block area, whatever our parameters are, agree, we'll roll them out there. Um, I certainly agree we shouldn't put them out in the winter.
That solution is, uh, again, as I, as I suggested in my communication to council, um, it is intended to gain compliance within a set timeframe, whether it's 30 days, 45 days, but really no more than that parameters, 30-day time period. But also, it's, it's not a cure-all. It is, uh, people who tend to drive however they tend to drive, um, will then pick up that habit again once those speed bumps are removed. So it, it is clearly meant to be a, uh, some might do it as somewhat of a punitive measure to address speeding in the neighborhood or perceived speeding. Because it will, based on the information I've discussed with the city engineer, is that information from the manufacturers is that, you know, it will require the driver to slow down between two to five miles an hour. And, you know, in a 25-mile-an-hour zone, that's a significant reduction. And then they are spaced appropriately within a designated area that you really don't have time to recover from one bump to another. And, and it has, it is designed to slow you down. And I think we've all experienced that probably in mostly parking lots, on school properties. They seem to have them. They're more prevalent. Uh, my discussion with staff is that they've all experienced them in certain locations, and they are effective. They will slow you down. Um, if, we, we would sign the area, you know, speed bumps ahead, and recall that this location is adjacent to the city of Clive. And so, uh, you know, there are, the traffic does flow from that area as well. And so, uh, not all of the traffic concerns are generated by Urbandale residents. You know, that, that is unavoidable because we share multiple boundaries with other jurisdictions. And so, you know, it, it really becomes a, can you identify that they're from this community or that community? You really can't. And as, as, as the police chief can attest to, you know, what we gain, what we look for is compliance. Our, our goal is not to, uh, make a lot of money off of this writing tickets because that really isn't it. We want compliance from our drivers to say that you stay within a reasonable amount of, within the speed limit, that you're an attentive driver and that you drive accordingly. And again, the documentation that we've had from our last survey shows that, you know, 80 to 85% of the drivers are traveling 30 miles or less. And that becomes the level of reasonableness that has to be determined is at a reasonable speed or at that level or lower within a residential area. Um, the speed bumps themselves is, uh, we, we started looking at some parameters of a neighborhood because there are a number of adjoining streets that come into that area. Um, I think we could, we could come up with a, a definition for you. A, a percentage would be something you could discuss at your next meeting. But again, there are, in that particular neighborhood, you know, I live in that particular neighborhood, there are alternative routes for people to take aside from driving over speed bumps. And I must, I assume that individuals in that area will seek an alternative route to avoid those. And again, um, traffic control is, is a very, at times a very elusive type of process, uh, because we go, we set up, uh, an operation where we have a squad car there. Uh, even the presence of a police vehicle has a tendency to slow the traffic down. And, and it has that immediate effect. But as the chief outlined, resources are a premium, and it really, from an operational standpoint, um, it, it just, you couldn't afford to have enough resources to address all the traffic concerns that we get brought, brought to our attention, either through the mayor and council members or directly to this, through the department, about, we believe that we have a problem in our neighborhood, please come and address it for us. And it's just, it's a, it's a human behavior that you try to correct through the presence, uh, issuance of tickets, presence of police officers, or other things that you just hope people comply with. So, again, the speed bumps in the 30-day period would certainly, um, gain the neighborhood's attention, but recall that the neighborhood would be, the individuals in that neighborhood would be the ones driving over them the predominant of the time.
If I could, I'd like to maybe just address the, you know, Mr. Wilson's raised the issue about the public duty doctrine and indicated that as one of the three lawyers up here, but he acknowledges that since we've retained one of the two best municipal attorneys, that he's had the privilege of knowing with, with Bob, uh, my limited understanding of the public duty doctrine, that it really doesn't apply here. It would be a stretch for someone to bring some sort of a claim against the city or us as a council because we failed to meet the standard of the public duty doctrine. But I'd like to have Bob, if you've had some input on that, as one of the two best municipal attorneys in the area.
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that duty requires a municipality to have a duty to the public at, at large. And in addition, you have to show some special circumstances. And, uh, this duty was looked at in the case of Folks versus Urbandale here just, you know, a number of months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And that case was reversed, but it was only on a procedural issue. The court had dismissed the lawsuit and they sent it back to say, so are they looking at the public duty doctrine? I'm certain the Supreme Court is, but it's still the law. And I think it's a stretch for us to ever be sued, quite frankly, you know, successfully. I understand Judge Wilson may disagree. He's really raising that issue, but I, I don't, I wouldn't be concerned about it, quite frankly, that we're going to have some liability.
I guess one other follow-up question, traffic flow. I mean, I'm assuming it's the traffic coming down 164th and across Aurora that's really the speed that is being complained about because that seems to be the straight stretches. Don't live in the neighborhood, haven't enforced the neighborhood. Is that kind of what is the perceived speed because it's a, a big straight area even though the data's not saying people are going that fast?
Yes, so the, both directions. So you start at 159th, this is up the hill.
Yeah, so the, both directions. So you start at one hundred and fifty-ninth, which is up the hill, um, and come down Aurora, I'm sorry, come down Aurora and, and then the other way as well. So, yeah, originally, there was a request for a stop sign at one hundred and sixtieth, a three-way stop sign at that T-intersection with one hundred and sixtieth and Aurora. That was originally, uh, one of the requests that was made back in fifteen. And that's when Dave McKay, uh, did his engineering study and did the traffic count up there, and it did not meet the warrants to, um, put a, a three-way stop sign in that location. So we've been dealing with it since then, um, running multiple traffic enforcement setups up there over the years that I detailed in that memorandum, um, and all the hours that we've spent up there addressing a problem that isn't any different than, quite frankly, isn't any different than any other street in Urbandale. And there's probably some streets in Urbandale that are much worse than that, actually.
Tanglewood, Aurora to Eighty-sixth Street, yeah.
As I detailed in that memorandum, we get approximately, if you average them out, about forty complaint areas a year that we work. Our procedure that we've developed is we try to saturate that area for a month. We try to get a car up there almost daily for the first month at different times to do enforcement. And then after that, for the next two months, we, we go to what we call periodic enforcement, where we show up a couple of times a week, uh, at different times, uh, and, you know, so no one knows when we're gonna be there kind of thing. Um, and then it drops off. Quite frankly, we archive it. And if we get another complaint in that area, we start all over again, but we just can't keep adding to that list. We just, we can't even do forty. Um, and they don't all come in at once. This is forty throughout the year. Um, so we just, we, we rotate them through. Um, we put the speed signs up there, the radar signs as well, to help people realize that, so if you, if you see this, the radar speed sign, that's an indication that we will be sitting in that area probably at some point. So, um, that's just another tool that we use to, to let drivers know that, hey, watch your speed. People want those permanently sometimes, you know, put up, but we just don't have the reas, we don't have that many of them. We move them around. And I think become less effective if they're up there permanently as well. They can be. So, uh, from my observation and the knowledge of this, uh, area up there and what we've done to address it, um, I don't, I don't know that we're, uh, using our resources in a wise way to continue with the level that we have been. We are currently, because we received the, the most recent complaint, uh, are in the saturation period up there again, and then we'll move it to periodic again, and, and then it drops off. That's just the way it works. And if, if we're directed to do something different than that, we certainly will. But, um, I get a lot of questions about why we're sitting up there. Uh, we've had those, some of the emails that you saw from the residents that live up there about the waste of resources in that area. They don't feel that's a problem area. Um, uh, I get that question from my officers as well. Uh, cause we've really pushed this complaint because of, because of the continuation of it, we've really pushed the officers to be up there more than we have probably in every, any other complaint area in the city over that same period of time. But we've put a lot of time and effort into this and to, not to the satisfaction of the complaint.
And so then the traffic count piece, there's about twenty-five hundred vehicles, at least in the, it was in this count piece, I don't know if it was day or for the total timeframe. How far off are we from stop sign warrant on it? Is it like, we're only fifty percent of the way there, or is it, we're ninety-five percent of the way there?
I, I couldn't answer that question.
Okay. I, I think your support's coming to help you on that one.
And that sign is not like the official way to count those cars. Their, their equipment is more of that, um, because people don't realize then that they're, they're being counted or their speed.
Some people ride bikes at really high speeds past them.
Right, it will pick up, it will pick up some of those things, uh, on occasion as well, but, uh, I'll let, uh, John address the, the warrants.
And again, we use the manual on traffic control devices, and I believe the warrant typically you have to total like two thousand entering vehicles. So again, I, again, I don't recall off the top of my head what kind of ADTs we've had, but very rarely do we, on residential streets like this, meet, meet the requirements. You also look at, like, your crash data and things like that can also warrant a stop sign as well.
And so if it's two thousand a day and we're averaging three hundred at high, three thirty-five average weekday count there, we're quite a ways off from control devices, so, okay.
Correct. And then just the other thing is, again, people, people always get tired when we say this, but the biggest thing, and it does say in the MUTCD, is you don't wanna use stop signs to control speed. Cause if people don't feel they're warranted, they, they tend to drive faster between them because they didn't think they should have stopped to begin with, so. We, we try to be careful on where we do place stop signs.
Okay, thank you.
That would be a little bit of my concern, not having any experience, but that would be a little bit of my concern with speed bumps as well. Is that people get slowed down in that area, then are they going faster to make up that time? Or if they're taking an alternate route because they don't wanna drive over them, are they now driving further out of their way and now speeding up to get caught up a little bit too? So I don't know how that's gonna work because we've never used them before.
Thank you.
All right. Further discussion or direction?
Well, we left it sufficiently muddled for the administration that you guys could continue handling as you see fit.
I, I guess from my standpoint, I'm not sure there's anything more to be done. I think the traffic counts are low, the speeds are in the realm. I think there's a perception of speed, but the data's not showing it.
Right.
So I'm not sure there's more, really, anything more to be done.
I don't think we're treating this intersection any different than any of the other thirty-nine that the chief makes reference to, you know, that, throughout the city. And I think once you start putting out speed bumps or you start making special combinations because of this area, then pretty soon you're gonna get a call from somebody wanting something else, and, and you're moving those speed bumps all over the place, so. I just don't see that it's arisen to the level that, you know, that Judge Wilson thinks it has.
The only thing about the speed bumps is that it would give our staff a chance to say, okay, we have speed bumps, we'll put them out there if fifty percent of your neighbors agree.
Well, but then you get a lot of pressure because now I'm going out with the petition saying, hey, sign this thing because we need to have those speed bumps right. What do you mean, you, you know, and I have kids and, so, sign off on it. And, cause you mentioned earlier, the pressure that can be put on residents because of it.
Yeah.
And then you've got a neighborhood split on another issue. If we don't have enough of them already, then let's add one more speed bumps to, uh, the division out there. Well, I don't, what's your thought?
I don't know. My only thought would be, do you wanna see some, do you wanna see a, some guidance on what a, what a speed, speed bump program would be? I think it's probably should be higher than fifty. I think you'd probably get, you know, could you get seventy-five percent of your neighbors on board with that? Or are you gonna find that they're not gonna support it? And so it's kind of a, they, they don't see the issue and they don't, they, they actually would prefer not to have the speed bumps. So I think that might be what we find, is we say, yeah, we can do this, and we can put these out, but you gotta get seventy-five percent of your neighbors on board, and they're gonna say, no way. Cause, cause we're not hearing about an excessive speed issue from seventy-five percent of the residents.
No.
Or even fifty percent of the residents.
I, I'm, I guess I'm, I don't see any reason to do any special, anything special on this either. I think this is no different than, as Dave said, no different than a lot of other places we have, and we deal with it as we deal with it throughout the city, so.
Since we've been given good legal counsel from one of the two best municipal attorneys in the area, you know, so I'm not concerned about the public duty doctrine. So I.
I'll let the five attorneys in the room battle that one.
It's a no-action type of, uh, recommendation. I know we're not here for a vote, but that's kind of my.
Yeah, I think that's the consensus from what I'm hearing, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, that's, uh, takes us to the end of our regular agenda. Item nine, mayor and council items. Ron, did you have anything to say?
Well, I, uh, going back to the speed issue, I wanna compliment the chief. At the bottom of Aurora, east of Eighty-sixth, you put a speed camera, and, uh, some people saw it here, but, but I, I went by there one day and there were four kids taking turns going down on their bikes trying to see who could clock the fastest time. So it, it does pick up bikes, and, uh, and none of them, I think, could have gotten a ticket, although they claimed they could have, but I, I don't think they were close.
All right, thanks, Ron. Adam?
I'm good for tonight.
All right, David?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I just don't think it's risen to that level.
No, just, council items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, and this is more for Steve. There was, uh, on the right property, I was reading the, um, P and B minutes. And the right property, remember, that was the issue about the transition of the lots. And the concern was that, that, that he had a seventy-five-foot lot and they wanted to raise it down. And reading that, I'm left with the impression that they're thinking that that might be something that they wanna apply and the policy change.
We're talking about the Highland Meadows Amendment that was at the last P and Z meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be coming to your next meeting, and it's an amendment to change some of the lot sizes that were originally approved in there. There was one of the property owners that lives in one of the existing plats that wanted the lots to be a little bit bigger in that area than what they were proposing.
Yeah, it seemed like Jeff Hatfield was on the other side, maybe it should be a provision of three and lots or something.
So they're gonna take a, they're gonna take a few of the lots, and instead of making them seventy-foot minimums, make them eighty-foot minimums so that they'll be a little bit bigger, and it sounds like Kimberly, who's developing that area, is agreeable to do that, but that will. It, it would just become part of that particular PUD. Now, we'll be having lot widths discussions as part of the comp plan study that we're gonna do. And this particular area would just apply to that PUD, but that will be a public hearing on your next meeting.
Adam?
Just, uh, thanks for all the data on the police, uh, the speeding issue that we discussed. I did a ride-along a couple of weeks ago with the Urbandale PD, and I thought the experience was helpful when looking at this because we did have an opportunity to run some radar and, uh, just got to experience the officer discretion on that firsthand, and they are, they can be at a tough spot. I, I probably don't need us telling them what they should be, who, who should get a ticket and who shouldn't, so I enjoyed that experience, so thank you.
Thank you, Adam. All right, uh, I have nothing further, again, other than, I know there's a big event on Saturday afternoon in Iowa, but I think, you know, I'd ask everybody to, nine, Saturday is also the twentieth anniversary of, of nine eleven, and, uh, so take some time to, to think about that, and, and especially on the twenty-year anniversary, so. With that, I'll ask for a motion and a second to adjourn. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website.